Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fox.
Here.
Councilmember Bill de la Pena is absent at this time. Councilmember Irwin is absent at this time. Councilmember Gillette.
Here.
Mayor Glancy.
Here. Request for continuous of any public hearing or agenda item, item 7G is pulled from the consent calendar. That's the air gas specialty products agreement. Okay. We will now begin the special presentation portion of our city council meeting. Please give me a moment to step to the podium. We have one special presentation this evening. It's our pleasure to proclaim the month of April 2009 as Donate Life California Month. Organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donations are life-giving acts, and thanks to groups such as our local group Trio, which is Transplant Recipients International Organization. Recipients and their families are provided support and education needed to help them go through the course that they're led to. I would like to invite Jackie Coleran, a Trio member and a UCLA liver recipient in 1996, to tell about the success of the program. Jackie?
Thank you.
Very nice to see you.
Very pleased to meet you. I'm very glad to be here this evening to make this presentation to the city, and I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak on this national issue. Over 12 years ago, I suffered a prescription interaction that caused liver failure, and it put me in a coma, and I needed a liver transplant in order to survive. I was very blessed to receive that transplant at UCLA Medical Center, and I was even more fortunate because in the city of Thousand Oaks, I found a wonderful group Trio, the Ventura County Chapter, West Valley Chapter of Trio, a group of individuals, heart, lung, liver, kidney, kidney, pancreas, and so forth and so on, recipients, who really made an effort to make sure that every transplant patient had a good recovery and could come back and have a good life and be a credit to their community and offer something to their community. So I'm also privileged to volunteer for the federal government agency units, and that is United Network for Organ Sharing, and it is the Organ Availability Committee. We try very hard to ensure that there are enough organs that any patient who needs them will have them, so that they too can enjoy the miracle of life. Organ donation is very simple. It's if you had something that you no longer had any use for, and you knew that it would be burned, or that it would be buried, would you give it to someone else freely in order to save their life? So it's not a complicated idea. And the city has always been really wonderful in supporting us in this effort. They've given us many proclamations. This year, we decided we'd like to do something for the city. We are partnering with the California Department of Motor Vehicles, the National Donate Life Movement, and in every state, every city, schools, churches, hospitals, other entities, these flags will be flown, they will be displayed, they remind people that donation works, they remind us that we should all be donors, simply because it's the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
So, we would like to present this. These are Trio members.
Jackie, thank you very much for the flag. The city will appreciate this tremendously and display it at all opportunities, and it's my pleasure to present a proclamation that goes over a great deal of what you were saying and all of your efforts. We appreciate everything you do for mankind and your fellow people. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Karen. I would, and there's one thing more that I really want to say, is I'd like to challenge everybody here tonight, both in the audience and the people here in council chambers. Go online, go to donatelifecalifornia.org, donativeda california.org, and register to be a donor. You can be really specific. It takes a minute to do. You can then send out an affidavit to everybody on your email list, and let's widen that pool of donors, so that if someday someone that you know needs an organ, they aren't going to have to wait and suffer and perhaps not get one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks again.
God bless. Thank you so much. These are for the council members. They are the pins in the box. I'll have some out.
Okay. Okay, would the city clerk please announce public comments?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All speakers for public hearings shall be called and heard during the public hearing. Pursuant to council standards of operation, the mayor may assist any speaker from straying into areas not within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Under state law, issues discussed under public comments can have no action unless listed on the agenda and may be referred to the city manager for administrative action or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking, and speakers are requested to state their name and city of residence for the record. Seven people have presented cards and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Mary Ann Van Zul, who will be followed by Jan Smith, followed by Kaylin Wydell. Please give us your name and the city of residence.
My name is Mary Ann Van Zyl, and I live here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for the opportunity to speak during the public comments period of this city council meeting. As I said, my name is Mary Ann Van Zyl, and I have two children who attend Westlake Elementary School. We ride our bikes to school almost every day. I'm active at the school in promoting walking and biking to school, and organized the school's participation in International Walk to School Day last October. I'm also unemployed downstairs in Public Works. I wrote to you two weeks ago about the dangerous school crosswalk at Devonshire and Westlake shortly after the tragic accident in which two pedestrians, one a two-year-old boy, were hit by a car speeding down Westlake Boulevard. I crossed Westlake Boulevard at this intersection when I dropped the kids off at school and make my way on my bike to City Hall. By show of hands, how many of the people here are here because of the accident that happened two weeks ago? Thank you. As parents of Westlake students and neighbors of the school, we are all very shaken up by this accident. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Assistant City Manager Candace Hong for her response to my original email to the city council. She confirmed that the city is preparing an application for a Safe Routes to School grant in which the city proposes to ask for funds to build a sidewalk on the east side of Westlake Boulevard, so that pedestrians can cross Westlake at the signal at the intersection of Westlake and Petrero. I will ask Ms. Hong that a can't copy of that application be made public. I will also ask her to make public copies of the traffic review taking place because of the accident, which she said was still underway. I hope the traffic review will make recommendations for immediately improving the signage on Westlake Boulevard approaching the crosswalk at Devonshire, perhaps including school's own signs with flashing lights on top. Public Works Director Mark Watkins will be meeting with parents at Westlake Elementary School next Wednesday evening, April 1st, to discuss how we can fix this crosswalk, which has been a problem for years. I appreciate his willingness to do this. While I think the best solution is building a sidewalk on the east side of Westlake Boulevard, the intersection is just as dangerous today as it was two weeks ago when the pedestrians were hit. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Jan Smith, followed by Kaylin Wydell.
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, council members, city staff. I am Jan Smith. I'm from the Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village Regional Chamber. I've come tonight to tell you about a trip that the chamber is planning. Last year, we had a trip to China that was so successful that we have decided to do it again. And what about this trip? It's a nine-day business pleasure trip to Shanghai and Beijing, October 11th through October 19th. The question is, how much? Let me tell you first what you get. Round-trip airfare, five-star and four-star hotels, three full meals a day, and yes, most of them are Chinese, deluxe blast tours, English-speaking tour guides, and your airport taxes. So now the question is, how much? $1,799 for chamber members. Add one more hundred dollars for non-chamber members, that's $1,899. This trip was our first year last year, and we were really excited. We took 80 folks, some that were chamber members, some not. They came back and said this was the best trip ever, so we are doing it again this year. We are also offering for an additional $4.50, a side trip to, and I believe it's pronounced Chian, which would take place of a couple of days of the trip. We are holding an orientation where we will give everybody all the details, what the day includes, what your times, you'll be leaving, et cetera. On Tuesday night, April 15th, I think it's actually April 14th, I have a typo, it's Tuesday night, 5:30 at the chamber, you can call me at 805-370-0035, or you can visit our website, and that's Thousand Oaks Regional Chamber of Commerce. This is a great trip, and we're very excited to do it again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jan. Next speaker, Kaylin Wydell, followed by Lynn Hertz, followed by Kathleen Eto'o.
Hi, my name is Kaylin Wydell, and I live in the city of Westlake Village, and I'm here today to speak about this particular crosswalk. I am a parent at Westlake Elementary, as well as a parent who uses that crosswalk on a daily basis with two of my children. I'm asking that the city make this a top priority in fixing this crosswalk. I've brought pictures to demonstrate if we could put them on the TV of the particular crosswalk. Part of our concerns is that the signage leaning up to the crosswalk, there's an excess of signage, and so the crosswalk signs get particularly lost in the sea of signage that there presently is. And then when you get to the actual crosswalk, there's not even one sign there to demonstrate that this is a crosswalk. We've seen cars drive in excess of 50, 60 miles an hour and almost hit us on a weekly basis, and sometimes several times a week. What we are asking for as residents who use that crosswalk, we would like to see that there be an increase in signage. We've also taken some pictures of Kalina Middle School, where they have a lighted crosswalk that flashes and notifies drivers that there are pedestrians in the crosswalk, and again, there's a picture of that one. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Lynn Hertz, followed by Kathleen Eto'o, followed by Andre Perrin.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Hertz, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, a little on the six sides, I'll try not to get the germs everywhere. I'm here this evening for several reasons, but my main concern is that we're living in an economic time that could be considered very much in a crisis period for everyone in our country. And daily, I read the newspaper, and I see stores closing down, and small business people are no longer able to afford their storefronts. Friends are losing jobs all the time. But at the same time, I read in the newspaper that, you know, we're Thousand Oaks, California, we really don't have to worry. And we do have to worry. We all have to make changes and cut back and do what's fiscally responsible. The newspaper changes from day to day, whether you're looking at the city of Oxnard, or Camarillo, or whatever it is, but it does talk about budget deficits everywhere, all throughout the state. And if the information I have is currently correct, we're still looking at like a $3.2 million deficit for the city of Thousand Oaks. How in the world are we going to make that up? And when we all start cutting back, where are the cuts going to be? You know, quite frankly, I see a bunch of parents in here today, and I applaud them for coming out for the safety of their children, and that is far, far more important than so many other frivolous luxuries that we're thinking about adding to this community. This is a time where we really need to step back and think, what is it that we need? Do we need luxuries in an economic crisis? I know that there is a $5 million amount that is allocated out there for building a park. And while parks are wonderful, and people can enjoy them and have a great time at them, it's not the time. The time is to be conservative and to take care of public needs, public safety, our children, the community, make sure that we have enough policemen that are making the rounds throughout our community. So I urge you to think about money being spent on luxuries, luxuries that we can no longer afford, any of us. Thank you.
And thank you. Kathleen Eto'o, Andre Perrin, followed by Jason Casman.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Eto'o, and I'm a resident of the city of Camarillo. I'm the grandmother of the child hit by the car on Tuesday, March 10th, at the intersection of Westlake Boulevard and Devonshire. For years, I've been appalled by the speed of traffic on Westlake Boulevard. Even though the posted speed near the school has been 40 miles per hour, cars travel through there at far greater speeds. Since the accident, a number of neighbors, friends, and parents of children attending Westlake Elementary School, where my two older grandchildren attend, have told us how often they have complained about the speed and have questioned the safety of this intersection. This intersection is used by a number of children, both mornings and afternoons, and not only before and after school, but there is a park nearby as well. I noticed the Friday after the accident, the crossing guard has put up a sawhorse on the median with a sign stating "Slow School Crossing." Then the following Tuesday, March 17th, the speed limit was reduced to 35 miles per hour. Is this the city's only reaction to this accident? This crosswalk needs some kind of signalized crossing to get the attention of motorists. I've seen crosswalks where a pedestrian pushes a button, which triggers a flashing light on the streets, crosswalk, as well as the flashing light overhead. But we also need the continued presence of a crossing guard. You may also consider assigning traffic police to this area on a more than incidental basis. So I strongly urge you to consider the recommendations that you've been hearing today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eto'o. Andre Perrin, followed by Jason Casman.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff. I hope they did that correctly. I sort of plagiarized the lady that was three people before me. My name is Andre Perrin. I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm also a business owner in Ventura County. I have an engineering company in Newbury Park, and I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for your continued support on the Lang Ranch Community Park. I've been watching the evolution of it over the last, I know it's longer than I've been watching, I've been watching it for three or four years. It's the first time I've been here, but I've been to a lot of the CPRD meetings, and I know it's been a long struggle, and thank you very much for your support. There's a lot of people out there that are looking forward to enjoying this with their family. It's going to be a great place, you know, whether, whatever type of sports or activities, or if you just want to go there and have a picnic with your family. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much yourself. Jason Casman is our final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Jason Casman. I live in Westlake Village, Lake Sherwood area, and I'm also here to voice my concern about that crosswalk at Westlake Boulevard and Devonshire. Something needs to be done, and it needs to be done immediately. It's just tragic of what happened there, and the fact that it really is a crosswalk that is not visible by the speeding motorists. I concur with the other folks. I'm also a parent of Westlake Elementary, and we've got to do something to protect our children. You know, that street is so heavily traveled and traveled at such a fast rate of speed that, you know, there's got to be something that the city could do to eliminate, you know, having accidents such as this one, and accidents that could be far worse. The fact that there were police officers in the, you know, couple days after the accident giving tickets was great, and, you know, a radar-type sign there, but, you know, that disappeared after a day or two, and, you know, that certainly is not even going to put a dent in, you know, the speeders on that street. So I urge the city to please try to make something happen there to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casman. Mr. Middick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I assume, comments on that issue raised. As I think one of the earlier speakers mentioned, there will be a public meeting on April 1st. We have flyer on April 1st with respect to the Westlake pedestrian safety and traffic issues, and there are flyers on the table over there, and so the information is also available on the city website. The meeting will take place on April 1st at 7:00 PM at Westlake Elementary School, and since you are here, I would like Mark Watkins to explain a little bit what the city has done. We have to be careful, because this is not an agendized item, and it'll be discussed in more detail on next Wednesday. But Mark, can you just give a quick summary of what we've done and where we're going?
Sure, just very briefly. We did receive a number of emails in regards to this issue over the past week or so. We met this last week, met with the school principal and the assistant superintendent out there, and one of our traffic engineers walked the site, looked at some potential safety improvements that could be made. I would comment also that we do have a school site safety committee that includes one of our traffic commissioners, representing for the Police Department, Public Works, and the school district administration office, and we've been reviewing and continue to review every school in town, and so that's on a rotating basis. We've been going to every school, looking at their layouts, looking at improvements that could be made. And then when traffic accidents occur, such as the tragic one that occurred out here, or any other traffic accident in town, the same type of review takes place. So in this case, I asked the school principal, and then she concurred that a public meeting would be helpful. There was a number of good suggestions. It came about through these emails and some of the comments I heard tonight, and that type of meeting is what gives us the opportunity to address some of those and determine what makes sense out there. And then finally, I do need to mention, Westlake Boulevard is the 23 freeway, and so the property is Caltrans. Caltrans has responsibility out there, and it's Caltrans crosswalk, and so we can make all kinds of suggestions. Caltrans oftentimes very good about working with us on these things, but we will need to kind of bring them into the mix when we go to make improvements out there. And so I've got to call in, and we'll try to have a Caltrans representative. Next Wednesday, we'll have that community meeting also. And then finally, a couple of comments. Our police chief could comment also, but they routinely do the enhanced enforcement around schools, and so the pedestrian sting-type operations, the radar speed trailer and some of those, that's something that they rotate through the schools, and that will continue. Leave it there.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fox?
Yeah, just want to ask, the meeting is next Wednesday night?
Yes.
Okay. As a related issue, if you've been following the council, this street, very close proximity, is the exact location where the fire chief has been talking about a fire station. And we talked about serious accidents and issues that could occur in that area, and so, Mr. Middick, in addition to Public Works, I'd like the fire chief, Chief LaPlante, to attend the meeting. I've also asked city staff to get response times for the emergency responders, and how long it took for us to get this very seriously injured lady to the hospital, because these are unfortunate accidents that occur, but as an unrelated, but I think important point to the school issue and the safety issue, is the emergency response that should have come, in my view, from the corner of Westlake and Petrero. And I don't even know where the response came from, but that is just literally seconds from where the fire chief wants to put a fire station, so I'd like that information to be shared as well.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. I appreciate it. Mr. Gillette, we have to remember that this is not an agendized item, and so our comments really need to be extremely limited. Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Watkins, two quick questions. Have we had any communication with Caltrans, Caltrans local engineer, or with Mr. Failing, or anyone in that organization about this incident and our increased concerns and sensitivity to this location?
Yes, yeah, we did advise them both about the accident and the number of emails and correspondence that we've received, and just to put them on notice. And then we have not invited them to the meeting yet next week. That meeting was just confirmed today, but we'll do that.
Okay, that was part of it. If we would extend an invitation to allow Caltrans to get a sense and feel right from the beginning. The other thing was, as you look at it, are you going to do an evaluation of the possibility of installation of a smart crosswalk at that location relative to the intersection itself and signalization? Does that come into the mix as the analysis of the location is discussed?
Basically, everything's on the table. We'll talk about all the different suggestions that are out there.
Well, hold it, guys. Hold it. This is not agendized. We need to curtail any further discussion here. I appreciate your cooperation.
And then, Mr. Middick, we'll report back after the meeting with a memo to you, that then can be shared with council.
And we'll keep the interested parties in the loop.
Thank you very much. Next item is City and Redevelopment Agency Consent Calendar. Item 7G has been pulled. Is there any comment about the other items or a motion? Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I'll move the consent calendar with the exception of 7G.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Comments? Okay, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Public hearings. City clerk, please open public hearings.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A, municipal code amendment, MCA 2009-70028, regarding speed limits. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and we have no speaker cards.
Okay, Mr. Watkins?
Thank you, Mayor Glancy, members of city council. The item for consideration tonight is a follow-up. It's one of the action items from the Lynn Road Action Plan. On January 13th, 2009, city council approved the Lynn Road Action Plan and directed, I'm sorry, the follow-up of all the finishing items of the Lynn Road Action Plan, and directed staff to go ahead and prepare the municipal code amendment to lower the speed limits on a portion of Lynn Road that is currently posted 50 miles an hour down to 45. That portion of Lynn Road is from Camino Manzanis north up to Los Arboles. As you might recall, as part of the Lynn Road Action Plan, the city constructed radar enforcement pads to provide for enhanced enforcement for the police department, radar speed signs, and a number of other improvements. Subsequent to all those improvements, the speed surveys were redone, and the prevailing speeds now allow us to post the street at 45 miles an hour. With that change, the speed on Lynn Road from the 101 freeway all the way up to Avenida de los Arboles will be 45 miles an hour, and then from Arboles up to 23 freeway will continue to be posted at 50 miles an hour. The speed surveys do take into account the additional items that we are allowed to consider other than just prevailing speed, including unusual conditions, not readily apparent to motorists, collision rates. The number of pedestrians, bicyclists, and staff has used all of those provisions to allow the reduction down to the 45. And so with that, we ask that council approve the municipal code amendment to change the speed limits from 50 to 45 on Lynn Road between Camino Manzanis and Avenida de los Arboles. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Questions to staff? Mrs. Irwin?
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. And again, we're happy that this is happening. Just one question, and hopefully not too far off the subject. If this was a Caltrans road, would you just be able to lower the speed limit? I'm, we just, on the previous, we just heard that there was a speed...
No, Caltrans goes through the same exact process that we go through. So they've got that same process on Westlake Boulevard that we have on Lynn Road.
So, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gillette?
Do you have cards?
No cards.
Thank you.
No cards.
Mr. Watkins, do you recall when was the survey conducted and when was that speed limit raised from 45 to 50? Jackie?
We don't have that date with us, no. When it went to 50, we don't have that date with us right now. It's been a number of years back.
Four years, four to five years ago?
Yeah, in that range, four to five years ago.
Okay. I just, in response to Mrs. Irwin's question, immediately when the survey said that we had to make the roadway compliant with the vehicle code and case law, and that the courts would allow our officers to write citations, the speed limit was dropped to, or was raised to 50. And there was a community outcry from residents in the area, and it's taken five years. And I don't know how many thousands of hours of meetings, discussions, applications, appeals, and finally, and money. Lots of money. And we're arriving at this now, and I think, I think we need to keep track of that. I think we need to be aware that this process is not an easy, quick process, and we're not in a vacuum. We're not alone. We don't make decisions and immediately have them carried out. And I think somebody has, I think we all need to be aware of the process, time, effort, energy, and resources it takes to make something like this happen, and we're not in control of it. The other question that I have is, if this motion passes, when can we look forward to the reposting of the street?
About two weeks before the signs are reposted. And the signs are actually the quickest, but there's also pavement markings that are out in the street, and those pavement markings have to be ground, and then there's new thermoplastic that gets overlaid. So that's the part that takes the scheduling. So the signs are quick. We can have those made up right away, but to do the pavement markings, about two weeks before the whole job gets done.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. When you close the public hearing, prepared to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Any further comments or questions? None? Mr. Gillette, go ahead with your motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Comments? Please vote.
Yeah, let me just, I don't want this to pass. And I know we've talked about it before, but I think when the staff and the community and the council get together, and even though it takes longer than anybody really wants it to, but are reactive to the concerns of the community in a real and measurable way, fact of the matter is, the speed limit was 50, and we were having a lot of complaints, a lot of issues on Lynn Road. We're now reducing it to 45. We've done a number of measures that are transparent to the community. They can see it. I think we need to recognize that. In particular, Ms. Irwin and Mr. Gillette's many hours of involvement, and I don't want to count out the staff, but more importantly, the very patient community that stood by and led us to our job, and we can actually see some measurable change. So I want to congratulate both of you.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, and I concur absolutely. This wouldn't have happened. There is a tremendous amount of assistance from resident, concerned residents that's right there with us during all of the meetings and all of the discussions and all of the analysis. So there's just one piece left in most of that, and that's the signalization of Lotus. So the motion is, staff recommendation.
Thank you again, and please vote.
The ordinance title is an ordinance amending Article 5, Chapter 3, Title 4 of the municipal code relative to speed limits, and that passes 5-0.
Thank you. Mr. Mittnick, you have 9A.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you tonight is the annual citywide goals for the next two years, so fiscal years 2009, 2010, and 2010, 2011. As a reminder, city council held a goal-setting workshop on February 24th, and the outcome of that is five different policy documents. And staff is recommending approval of the actions council took. So I'll go through them, I'll go through them at this time. The first is the city's mission statement. The council reaffirmed the existing mission statement. And as a reminder, the mission statement really is a quick summary of what the purpose of the city organization is, and it reads as follows. Extraordinary service to the citizens we serve is our purpose and product. And we put that on the council's agenda in a variety of city documents and in a variety of places throughout City Hall and other public places. The next policy statement that the council decided to keep in place and to reaffirm is the customer service philosophy. And this is what we use for the 650, actually more than 650 employees, as a reminder of how to interact with members of the public. And that mission statement is printed in various locations. It reads as follows. The city of Thousand Oaks is committed to maintain a desirable living environment while ensuring that change reinforces both environmental quality and economic vitality, respect the roles of citizens, council, and staff in establishing and implementing policies and programs, provide excellent community services in a fair, efficient, and responsive manner, and promote public confidence and trust. A very long sentence, but it took a long time to get to that point a few years ago. This philosophy has served the city well, and it will continue to do so going forward. The next set of documents is the actual broad goals for the organization. Any well-run organization, public or private, has some overriding goals that the organization tries to adhere to during the year. I won't read all of those because there are 10 of them, but they're on page 14 of the report. Council did reaffirm the broad goals that were put in place a few years ago. These broad goals cover all the main aspects of the city, and they cover services and programs managed and provided by all of the city departments. And they range from the very first one to provide municipal government leadership, which is open and transparent. And there's another one dealing with being fiscally and managerial responsible, another one dealing with public safety, open space, infrastructure, environmental programs, redevelopment projects, et cetera. And they're fully delineated on page 14. The next set of documents has to do with the actual top priorities, and council sets these every year. And these are the top things, if you will, programs or services that council, not programs, but projects, if you will, that the council would like to achieve during the next year. And this is how we hold ourselves as an organization accountable, and we report back on this on an annual basis. And there are nine categories, and I'll hit them really quickly. The first one is to maintain fiscal responsibility. And included in that, and on page 15 is item 1E, what we will be doing different and going forward, whenever there is a proposed capital improvement project in front of council, we will, as your staff, include a ranking of priority 1, 2, or 3 based on being an essential health and public safety-related item, all the way down to quality of life, nice-to-have type of thing. That'll help the council focus on the extent to which the proposed project is needed. The second category has to, deals with public safety, and we heard some comments about fire, so one of the sub-priorities is getting a new fire station for the community of Westlake. The third item has to deal with environmental programs such as water rationing, LEED-certified buildings. We were one of the first cities in this county to produce a green building, a public green building. And also to implement green business, a green business recognition program. And there are more details in the report. Fourth item has to do with transportation projects, in particular, getting the 101-23 interchange project approved, as well as to complete the landscaping on the 23 freeway. I think most people in this room understand the importance of that one. The fifth category has to do with the cultural arts review, to implement the recommendations from the consultants of the Comprehensive Cultural Arts Review Report, and that comes to council in a few months. And a sub-goal here that was added during the study session was to review the potential for a visual arts venue. Sixth category has to deal, has to do with working cooperatively with CRPD to do a variety of park projects, including the Lang Ranch Community Park, and to complete the Rancho Petral specific plan. And there are a variety of other items, including the senior master plan to implement that. We had some discussion on that. Seventh has to do with open space. Always a top priority to acquire more open space, and once we get it, to maintain it effectively. That's a big challenge for our community. We have over 15,000 acres of permanent open space. Maintaining that and protecting it's a challenge. Eighth is to increase affordable housing units to implement the 2006-14 housing element. And recently, this city was, the city council was one of the very first in the county to adopt its housing element for the next coming cycle. A sub-goal with that to remind council was to obtain legislation to eliminate or amend the state law with respect to the RENA requirements, because it's very restrictive, and there's some challenges in adhering to that. Ninth was to cooperate with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and its desire to have a specific plan for the Boulevard, and that will come to council to initiate the review process shortly. Well, actually, there were 10 categories. And the 10th category is to deal with comprehensive citywide parking enforcement. We have challenges with recreational and oversized vehicles throughout the community, and council did direct us to continue working on that and to make progress. So that's a very quick summary of the top priorities. The last category or set of policy documents has to deal, or is the city council norms. And council made a couple minor changes, and that would be norms 3 and 4, making reference to including the campaign cycle with respect to those two norms. And also, council directed us to make sure we post the norms in the council chambers, and we're working on, well, they're on the screens right now, but we're working on having a board as you come in, or something posted on the wall. With that, staff is available if you need clarification or you have any questions. Thank you for your indulgence.
Okay, questions to staff? Mr. Fox?
Yes, I just want to point out, you know, and this is referenced to the issue we brought up previously with respect to the...
Pardon, Mr. Fox? We do have some speaker cards. Would you like to do the comments after?
Yeah, I'll hear the speakers first.
Okay. Any questions of staff before we go on? No? Okay. Mr. Shillo is here for questions only. Are there any questions concerning the visual arts? None? Thank you for being here. Joe Pagano, followed by Carl Knutson, followed by Ronald Tansky. And please give us your name and city of residence. Following speakers might position themselves a little closer down here.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, council members. My name is Joe Pagano. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a Thousand Oaks business owner. Tax and spend. The city council is taking $5 million of city dollars and allowing money that should be paying for the deficit to go to Caneo Park and Rec, to spend on a project that will only be partially completed and to the benefit of only special interest. These grandiose plans are so large that it will take decades to complete and to no benefit to the immediate residents. If I was planning a home improvement, I would want to know the details of my money and where it would be spent. The council should do the same and not give the CRPD carte blanche. Let the CRPD use its own funds to build what they want. The city needs to prioritize its absolute needs in this economical and challenging time. This is not a good time to give away large blocks of money when the city has a large deficit. Last week, a number of TO residents, teachers, received pink slips. What will the city do, not only to help them now, but next year when the deficit continues? Will you raise my taxes again? The council, and especially the city manager, need to approve the transfer of the $5 million to be spent on the shortfalls in other parts of our city's budget, such as public safety, transportation, and other important issues. City dollars to fund the CRPD project can wait. It must wait. If there is an amendment or whatever you need to do that needs to be changed, then that is what the council must do. If not, the term "tax and spend" is what our council members will be known for in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pagano. Carl Knutson, followed by Ronald Tansky.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and address you. It's been a while since I've been here. I guess I'm in the right spot, because this last speaker is opposed to the Lang Ranch Community Park, which I'm not. I think if we do something to unwind this park project that has been ongoing now for some years, I think would be a great mistake. I don't see any persuasive argument not to do it. This is a great magnet for the city of Thousand Oaks. I love living here. I think the community and the sporting and all the recreational activities that they have for their residents is outstanding. I think this park will be a magnet. I think it will pay it for itself over time and people that it draws into the city, and I want to thank the council members for their time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ronald Tansky, followed by Ron Segal, followed by Ed Taylor.
Is it all right with my wife joining me?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. She's got a bad foot, and she'll be up here in a minute. First of all, I want to give the mayor and the council members kudos for questioning the expenses involved with the Ventura County Fire Department. Hopefully, you'll reach some suitable accord and help reduce the cost of those emergency services. We know the budgets are tight. Everybody is saying it tonight. You can't miss the signs of a weak economy. And as an almost-retiree, it's certainly kept me going. I'm trying to find work and keep going into my 70s. So one thing we don't want to have is increased taxes, fees, and other costs associated with living in such a fine city. I know that some of the people here that are for the so-called Lang Ranch Park, which is really a sports complex more than it is a park, have argued, and presented their feelings that you should continue with this park. And I'm not going to say that I'm completely against it, because it has some good points, but it should be... but it should be a community park and a park that can be built and completed and maintained properly without great expense. And one way to do that, of course, is to build fewer ball fields and to add things that a larger contingent of the community can enjoy and learn from, such as a community garden that's easy to build, maintain, and can be subsidized by the people that use the garden. It's done in other cities such as Los Angeles. So, have my wife kind of take over and finish up. In any case, I think that the costs that have been proposed for building the park are out of line.
We're really in agreement with the other speakers, such as Mr. Pagano, who just spoke about the park. He covered many of the points, but this is a non-essential. It is not essential to have it. What would be nice, as a first step, if you want to do something, is to have a community garden, organic, with composting, that adults and children could learn from, so that we could build a sustainable economy. And you spoke about Thousand Oaks being one of the first cities to have a LEED energy building, and you want to be a green city. It's perfect, and I see you're cutting me off, but just one last point. I spoke to a principal in the Thousand Oaks area, and he said that the schools are crying for money, that, you know, staff is being cut back, classes are being enlarged. We do not want to become like L.A. USD.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming up.
I have a bad foot, and that's why I had to limp up with him, so thank you.
Good luck with the foot.
Mr. Mayor and council members, with respect to your priorities. In 1973, the city of Thousand Oaks supposedly gave the current site for the proposed Lang Ranch Community Park to the CRPD. At the time, there were few homes near the site. Subsequently, the city granted approval for the construction of thousands of homes on the adjacent vacant acreage, supporting a superior quality of life that still exists. Eventually, when the CRPD got around to developing the site, Westlake Boulevard was already a major traffic artery with a blind curve on an eight-degree slope. During its extension northward, Westlake Boulevard suffered a major landslide, exposing the fact that surrounding soils were unstable and subject to future problems. Nevertheless, CRPD plotted ahead and designed a $50 million mega-sports complex in the name of a community park with only one entrance/exit on the blind curve, eight-degree slope Westlake Boulevard. With tall lights and a PA system, the right to quiet enjoyment by the surrounding homeowners supported by this very council will be destroyed. While all of the other community parks close at 8:30 PM, this one is scheduled to remain open until 10:00 PM, causing light and noise pollution for early-to-bed commuters. The proposed park in its current configuration is likely to be a huge liability and major embarrassment for the city. This council's goal to construct Lang Ranch Community Park may be justified in the future, but granting $5 million to CRPD at present will prolong the existing economic conditions while denying aid to the closing schools, unemployed, homeless, and hungry. This city should be providing for all of its residents in this time of extraordinary suffering. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Siegel, I believe I've skipped over you. My apologies.
Ron Siegel, Thousand Oaks, council members. Mr. Mitnick has just outlined the goals for the city. He included fiscal responsibility, extraordinary service, customer service, and safety. The current budget seems to be contrary to these goals, especially with respect to the $5 million that are allocated to the Parks Department. I realize that after talking to Mr. Gillette, that a lot of the $5 million is supposed to go, basically, to infrastructure for the park, but I feel that the park should take another look at that $5 million and the infrastructure, because the park is designed as a mega-park and not as a community park. I've talked to people in lacrosse and field hockey. These people need fields, they need places to play. Everybody in this community who wants to recreate wants to have a park, as we do as community members, but the way that this park is laid out and in the phases that it's to be constructed does not lend itself to recreation for the entire community, and it does go against the budget and the goals of the budget that Mr. Mitnick has laid out. It is ironic that we're here talking, there was a group of people here talking about a fatal traffic accident on Westlake Boulevard. A couple meetings ago, the chief of police was talking about cutting out a traffic detective. The irony cannot escape you. Cutting out a traffic detective at a time when a simple light or sign cannot be erected seems to go against your policy of safety and service to the public. Also, with regards to service, you're talking about not filling 30 to 31 positions, civic employee positions. This is going to affect service to the citizens of Thousand Oaks. I'm asking you to be intellectually honest, fiscally responsible, and not do what's politically I am asking you to look again at the $5 million allocation of the park, reconsider it, so that the rest of the budget can be balanced. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and again, my apologies for skipping over you. That's the last speaker. Mr. Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, last week when we had the discussion on fire services, I was disturbed with some of the information that was shared with the council and the community by the Fire Department. Specifically, and I just want to say at the outset, I certainly appreciate the position that the representatives of the Fire District were in relative to the questioning from the council and the placement of a new fire station in the Westlake area while maintaining the current station in the Lake Sherwood area. I want to emphasize that, that this council and this city has never suggested that the Lake Sherwood station would be moved, but rather a new station would be placed at the corner of Petrerero and Westlake Boulevard, which is part of the Fire Department and the Fire District's plan, and it's what the Fire Chief himself proposed, actually, several years ago. And in that questioning, when pressed politely, the representative of the Fire District indicated that the service levels in the Westlake area were, quote, "adequate." Adequate service levels. And I went back and I actually watched the meeting, which is rare for me, because sitting through is tough enough, let alone watching it again, but adequate service levels. And then I'm struck when I read the mission statement that talks about extraordinary service to citizens. We serve is our purpose and product. It doesn't say adequate service. It says extraordinary. And then, in our philosophy, it talks about excellent service again. So I just want to emphasize to our community and the council, as we deal with these goals, I note that in public safety, the approval of a new Westlake Fire Station is the second item on our public safety goals, that this is a very, very important issue. And our public and our citizens deserve extraordinary service, not adequate service. And so we need to continue to pursue this issue. It is a public safety issue, which was clearly pointed out recently, and it's a quality of life issue for the folks that live in Westlake. And so I just want to make that observation relative to what our mission statement says and the testimony that we got from the Fire District relative to the current service levels in the Westlake area as being adequate. I see that as a serious contrast and something we need to pay attention to.
Further comments? Ms. Bill Doherty?
Thank you. We did discuss the council goals last month in a so-called study session. There was not unanimous approval on all of the items. I would like to mention that I am very much in support of item 2D on page 15 of the staff report, which deals with a review of the current day laborer site. I support that from a fiscal standpoint. I would like to see whether we can reduce the taxpayer subsidy of close to $100,000 to that site. That was approved unanimously. I did not approve item 5D, which deals with the development of a visual arts museum. So I will not be able to join my colleagues in approving that tonight, because I could not in good conscience approve a concept of a visual arts museum based on a three-minute presentation last month. We had the Discovery Center as part of our goal last year, and that has now fallen through the cracks, basically, after a fiscal, or I should say feasibility, study. I don't think that the visual, with all due respect to former county supervisor Mr. Shillo, there has not been enough scrutiny of this particular proposal for me to actually embrace it, and given the fact that we were not able to move forward with a Discovery Center, which had been in the works for so many years, I don't know whether, and I can't see that we would actually be able to move forward with a visual arts museum. If it does happen, that will be fantastic. From a fiscal standpoint, right now, it may be very difficult to do, as was the case with the Discovery Center. The proposed, oh, I would like a clarification on page 15, 1E, priority one, two, and three, which the council did support unanimously. In rereading it several times, priority two says necessary, but not essential, and there could be consequences if deferred. So I'm wondering, and I don't know whether there is staff here to answer that, but if it is necessary and if we didn't move forward with it, there could be consequences, how could it not be essential? That would be my question. Perhaps we can have a clarification there. And then, the council norms that were adopted several years ago and then slightly amended at last month, there is a proposal to print them on the back of the speaker card. Currently, the speaker cards have comments, how long an applicant or a speaker has to speak on any given item or issue. And I would be very much in favor of keeping the comments and the speaking time for the speakers on the card, and if it is at all possible to squeeze in the council norms without making the font too small, of course, that would be great, but I think if we already will post the council norms at the entrance, for the speakers, it's really more important to see how much time they will have to speak on an item than reading the council norms again and then perhaps not being able to read how many minutes they have on any given subject. So that was something I brought up last month, and I'd like to raise that again. And let me see, I believe that... Oh, and then, of course, Lang Ranch Community Park. I did suggest last month that we actually hold on to the $5 million for that sports facility, and that was not supported by my colleagues, which is the reason why it's not included here. I do think that perhaps it is, we should revisit that issue. And let's see. And I believe that those are the only comments that, and proposals that I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. None?
Well, if, I did need a clarification on the priority two.
Okay. Why don't we get Mr. Mitnick or who to do the clarification?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think I should refer that one to Mayor Proton Dennis Gillette, because he's the one who suggested these priorities. The council was in agreement at that time, and we put him in here as provided to staff.
Mr. Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was, as I explained at the time, the genesis of this came out of a capital facilities committee group to try and help us as we look at different items. The language was worked on at that setting, brought it forward in the goal-setting session. It was discussed. This is what the consensus, it doesn't have to be unanimous, and I think it still makes sense as presented.
No, I've completely realized, I'm sorry, I completely realize nothing has to be unanimous, being every now and then the minority on the council, but if, is there, and I did support this last month, I just would like to see an example of something that is necessary but not essential, and I'm thinking whether that is somehow contradictory, whether it needs to be reworded. That's all.
Okay. Well, I understand it, and the other council, I thought all of you understood it. The concept is relatively simple and the language is relatively clear. So when we get one of those that requires some discussion at that time, it's probably a good time to do it. I don't have a list of examples right now, trying to simplify a very complex issue by getting it down to some measurable general criteria to give us a starting point on some of these things. And so I think the concept is relatively self-explanatory.
Thank you.
Do you have further? None? Mr. Mitnick?
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we heard a number of speakers talk either for or in opposition of the Lang Ranch Community Park project. Just to clarify, this is a project that falls under the responsibility of the Canale Recreation and Park District. The Park District has gone through an extensive environmental impact review process, and all the issues and so on associated with that process have been vetted out, and that board has taken action, and they're moving forward on designing the project. And it's not a mega-sports complex. It does meet the legal definition of a community park. That's been determined by that agency. That's it for comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the clarification. I'd like to mention that there were seven comment, or written statement cards that were against Lang Ranch Park. Now, we're closed. Discussion motion, Mr. Fox?
I'm going to move the recommendation to approve items one through five as are contained in the staff report, and specifically, those are the city mission statement, customer service philosophy, citywide goals for '09 and '10, and '10 and '11, top priorities for '09 through 2010, and city council norms. Also want to give a thanks to our facilitator and our city staff. You know, and again, in a council, I think we had a very productive and constructive discussion that night on a variety of issues, and as has been pointed out, we don't always agree, but for the most part, we reached unanimous consensus on, I'd say, 95% to 98% of these items, and had good discussion and dialogue on those where we had different perspectives. So this is our roadmap. This helps the community keep the council accountable for how we govern, how we manage, where we concentrate our priorities, and it's an attempt to reflect the vast community, not necessarily just one individual neighborhood or one individual project, but all 130-some-odd-thousand residents and businesses that are here in the community. So I want to thank staff, and specifically Mr. Mitnick, for pushing us through this yet again.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Comments to the motion? Ms. Bill Doherty?
Well, in keeping within the spirit of cooperation, Mr. Fox, would you be inclined to allow me to separate the item regarding the visual arts museum? to allow me to separate the item regarding the visual arts museum as well as Lang Ranch Park, as we did during the last council meeting last month? Because as you say, I am in agreement with about 99% of all that, and I would really hate to vote against everything if, I know you've extended the courtesy to your colleagues before, and I would appreciate it this time. Thank you.
Yeah, if we can just, can we have the council, the clerk reflect, Ms. Bill Delapena's no vote on those two items? Mr. Mayor? Okay. Very good.
That's fine. Further comments to the motion? Mr. Gillette? Okay. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pedrosso, would you please?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The request is to initiate a municipal code amendment to consider the revision of the parking standards for hospitals citywide. The intent of this code amendment is to require a parking analysis in order to establish parking requirements for hospitals rather than the current requirement of 1.85 bit, sorry, 1.85 parking spaces per bed. This requirement is at least 20 years old, and it does not provide for today's hospital needs, which has more specialized services. The hospital has submitted, Los Angeles Hospital has submitted parking analysis for each of their most current expansions, and such was used as the basis to establish the parking requirements for the hospital. This includes the emergency room expansion, the ICU expansion, and the most recent one. Also, for the last, for example, for the last expansion, the hospital provided 1,024 parking spaces instead of the 513 that would have been required per code. Instead, the larger number was reflected on the parking analysis provided by the hospital. So at this point, the hospital is proposing a renovation and expansion of 60 beds, and staff wants to process this amendment concurrent to the entitlement applications.
Thank you very much. Questions to staff? Yes, Ms. Irwin?
Good evening, Ms. Pedrosso. I have one, I have a question and a comment. In the discussion analysis, it says, in essence, the proposed code amendment would revise the code to reflect the actual methodology used and to determine the number of spaces. Is that the actual methodology already used by the city or by any hospital, or whose methodology is being used?
Right now, the code requires 1.85 spaces per bed, but what the city has been doing is, instead of using that, because we know it's efficient, we've been requiring the hospital to submit a parking analysis. So the city right now is using a parking analysis that the hospital provides, we analyze, and that's how we determine the parking.
Okay. So that's, every project so far has required that?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, kind of an overall comment, I know that, you know, we're not looking right now at the expansion of the hospital, but I do think that we need to look at, as we're looking at parking, we need to look at an overall plan for, you know, all the different property owners there, and look at what they're doing, look at a plan for circulation and pedestrian circulation, and then probably something like an overall landscaping plan, as Mr. Prescott and I discussed earlier.
You got an awful lot into that. Thank you very much. Mr. Gillette?
Before you stop me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to just a small piece of that for a minute, because recognizing the relationship between vehicles and that hospital, as the planning process proceeds, we have talked about, on a number of occasions, a hospital zone, and that would include the surrounding streets. And particularly with the Janes Road from Young to Lynn Road, fairly wide street that has all of the elements. It has three, yeah, three heavily traveled and utilized driveways. It rises from two separate directions. It curves. It has people in oftentimes very, very emotional states, exiting and entering. The need, the perceived lay need at this location is to have some sort of a zone that people know they have crossed into, a zone that has all of these conditions.
Pardon me, Mr. Gillette? We're astray of what we're really looking at here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments to what we're looking at? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Mr. Prescott, good evening, and Mrs. Pedrosso as well. I have a question regarding the municipal code amendment. A couple of years ago, we changed our own laws to have applicants who request municipal code amendments actually pay for the staff work. And in this case, and if you can point me to the right direction, I would appreciate it, I don't see that that cost will be absorbed by the hospital, or how are we dealing with that? Thanks.
This is a city-initiated code amendment. It was not requested by the hospital. It was the city staff's idea for the purpose of changing our code to reflect what we actually do. As Ms. Pedrosso pointed out, the standard that we have in the code is completely inadequate, and we have been using a different methodology for many, many years, and we thought this was an opportune time with the hospital expansion now filed for us to update our code. So the hospital did not request this.
Thank you. Also, I would like to echo what one of my colleagues said, and also repeat what we stated last year when one other applicant came before us with a parking structure right in that same area, and the council voted it down due to various concerns. Mine was traffic primarily, and I did ask at that time whether there is some sort of specific plan in the works that would help with the circulation element of that particular area.
Pardon me, Ms. Bill Delapena? You're becoming like your fellows.
Oh.
We're off-spot here.
Okay. Well, then, I will, I will reserve that discussion then to the next council meeting or whenever we will take it up. Thank you.
And thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Fox, thank you.
I would move the recommendation to adopt the attached resolution, attachment 1, initiating a municipal code amendment, 2009-70079.
Thank you. No comments to the motion? Mr. Gillette?
I don't think the information in the recommendation is adequate. Therefore, I'll vote no.
Please vote.
Motion carries 4-1. Councilmember Gillette dissenting.
Thank you very much. Item 9C. Ms. Leopold?
Good evening, Mayor Glancy, and members of the council. For your consideration this evening, is a request for concurrent processing of residential entitlements in association with pre-zoning and annexation of 8.57 acres of land located at 502 Whitegate Road. This parcel is located immediately southeast of the junction of Whitegate Road and Lynnview Road in the unincorporated portion of Newberry Park, adjacent to the city's Kelly Water Reservoir. The owners of the property are requesting construction of a single-family dwelling and need water and wastewater services from the city, thus requiring annexation of the property to the city. The owners have filed the applications for pre-zoning and annexation to the city. In addition, the applicants are proposing to dedicate a portion of the subject property to COSCA for open space purposes. At this time, the owners are requesting concurrent processing of the residential entitlement application with the pre-zoning. Per municipal code, requests for concurrent processing must be considered and approved by the city council itself. If concurrent processing is approved, the hearings will be combined, and the city council will make the final decision on the residential entitlement applications as well as on the pre-zoning, after review and recommendation by the planning commission. Staff has reviewed the request and believes that concurrent processing will be beneficial in evaluating the land use design in relation to the zoning, and will provide for a more efficient review process to the property owners wishing to construct their home. This concludes staff's reports, and staff is the bill for any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions to staff? Ms. Bill Delapena?
Thank you. Will there be a need for an environmental evaluation?
Yes, there will be.
Is it to comply with SECRE?
Yes, it will. Thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Irwin?
I, maybe I don't, this is just to be more efficient, basically, is the reason that this is being requested?
Essentially, yes, and to combine the public, or the hearings, essentially, it will save time on staff's part, minimizing additional hearings that staff will need to attend in order to consider the pre-zoning with the residential entitlements.
The county zoning is open space, 20 acres, does that mean, under county zoning, they would have been able to build one home?
Yes, under the county zoning, they'd be able to build one home. And I think in addition to the process being a little bit more efficient, we're dealing with a potential dedication to COSCA, a possible lot line adjustment with the city property, and I think it's just going to give the council a better feel for what's going on if they get to see the project at the same time they look at the zone change. And if you did not authorize concurrent processing, you get the zone change in somewhat of a vacuum, and then later on, depending on the zoning you approved, then they would have to come in with their individual house application, it's probably going to be a PPD permit.
Okay, but let's say they don't end up liking, I mean, is there any possibility that the staff is going to recommend that no home can be built on that area? What if they don't like the zone that's being recommended?
No, there's not a possibility that we will recommend that there not be a house there. It's a legal lot, and they're entitled to one house, no matter what the zoning is. And we've actually, they have pursued, been pursuing for some time, a process with the county under the belief that potentially they may not need to annex to the city, and then it was determined that, yes, they did need to annex to the city in order to hook up to the city's wastewater system. But while they were with the county, our staff was looking at the plans as well, because the county refers all the plans to us for review and comments. We're familiar with the project, we're familiar with the terrain of the property, and we know that a home can be put there without significant waivers necessary, so we're pretty comfortable with it.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation. The last thing is, I think that those, you know, it's really advantageous for the residents, for the city, for continuity of service, to look at annexing all these properties. They do have a number of neighbors that are, I mean, potentially could be annexed also and enjoy city services. Often, people, and you and I have gone through this with Lynn Ranch residents, don't know the benefits of annexing to the city. And I think we went through and made up a fact sheet that you had for Lynn Ranch residents. Is it possible, just while you're working on this, to at least, at the same time, let the neighbors know what the advantage is of annexation?
We can do that. One that we're particularly going to focus on is adjacent property to the west, that if this property is annexed, that other property would become an island, completely surrounded by the city, which LAFCO doesn't like, and obviously, the city doesn't like either. However, we have had a discussion with the LAFCO executive officer, and the bottom line on an annexation would be that if they did not elect to join the city, there would not be any way to actually force them. And I understand your question was a different one, but we will, we will make contact with nearby property owners to see if they're interested in joining this annexation as well.
And you made up just a very simple, you already have a very simple fact sheet about the advantages and the lowering of sewage rates, and the increasing, the better services, so it seems like it would be a minimal effort to do that, and it would be advantageous to the county and the city, and I think those residents also, so, thank you.
Further questions? A motion, then. Ms. Irwin?
I will move the staff recommendation to approve the request for concurrent processing.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0, and Councilmember Gillette absent.
Thank you. Let's see, redevelopment agency reports, we have none. Committee commission board reports, we have none. Council issues, 2009 National League of Cities meeting, congressional conference, and also the lobbying activities. Okay, Ms. Irwin, would you like to report on, what you could report on, and then I'll pick it up from there? You know what, why don't you let me do this? Councilmembers Gillette and I arrived in Washington on the 11th for a fairly extensive lobbying effort. It was in conjunction, several of the visits were in conjunction with VCTC. For those who are not aware, our number-one attempt with safety lieu funding was the 10123 interchange. We're asking the feds for $30 million. And I have to say, we saw a lot of people, a lot of congresspeople and their staff, and the mood was certainly more positive than what we've heard since, well, regardless, the mood was very, more positive than what we've heard. Many expressed the gratitude of our being there to promote the projects, and were there to answer any questions that they had. Following that, Mr. Gillette and I attended our various policy committee meetings on Sunday. His was Public Safety, mine was Information Technology Communications, and Mr. Gillette's comments were on his meeting or in the write-up. The Information Technology Communication Committee, the Steering Committee, we passed three resolutions last year relating to digital television, broadband access. We had the legislative update and established as a priority municipal broadband, which the president is very much in favor of, American Recovery Reinvestment Act, trying to monitor that and see what we can garner to help with our efforts in government and the efficiency through information technology. The other issues that were presented for funding were mobile communications surveillance, community education, command center, McCray Ranch Regional Facility, Thousand Oaks Library radio archive, Wilder Water Storage Tank, storm drain infrastructure improvement over by Kelly Road, and Lynn Ranch safety buffer lanes. If there are any further questions, I'd recommend that you take a look at the write-up, and it should explain everything for you. Recommend that we file and report. Please vote.
Motion carries 4-0. Councilmember Gillette absent. Motion carries four, zero. Councilmember Gillette absent.
City manager, you have follow-up?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no additional comments by way of follow-up on requests from the public, by way of announcements. Just to reiterate what was discussed earlier, on April 1st, next Wednesday night, at Westlake Elementary School at 7:00 PM, there will be a public meeting on the Westlake pedestrian safety and traffic issues. Information is on the city's website. The next city council meeting, excuse me, will be next Tuesday night, March 31st, with one item on the agenda, and that is the, I'm sorry, public hearing dealing with the appeal of the proposed Hampshire Road/Home Depot project. We do have reserved, if need be, the following, or the Thursday night, April 1st, if need be, if the Home Depot decision is not achieved that night. April 7th will be the next council meeting after that, with one public hearing scheduled at this time. This has to do with the Housing and Urban Development Neighborhood Stabilization Program dealing with foreclosure funds. There will be one study session on the proposed capital improvement program budget. Reminder, council, we are going through the two-year budget preparation process, and that is the next component. We'll have a variety of department reports, one of which will be an update on the Norwegian Grade Capital Improvement and Temporary Road Closure Project. For the council and public's benefit, this road, the Norwegian Grade will be closed for a period of up to two months to do some long-needed improvements to that road for safety reasons. With that, that concludes city manager's comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Pena.
Thank you. I wanted to just confirm that the follow-up meeting, if it need be, is on Wednesday, April 1st for Home Depot, not Thursday, because I did not reserve Thursday, I reserved Wednesday.
Correct. It's Wednesday, April 1st.
Okay.
I stand corrected. I don't know if that's a forty on slip, but I'm sorry, April 1st, Wednesday, sorry.
And thank you both. Ms. Albano, you have a close session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the viewing public, and city staff. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54, 956.9, subsection C, two cases. I do not believe that there will be anything to report out. If the council does authorize initiation of any of the two cases under the Brown Act and the Safe Harbor provisions, there won't be anything that we would actually report at this meeting, and that it would become public if and when the city were to actually file a lawsuit, and we would explain all that in the minutes to the meeting, if that is what the council does at the close session tonight. Thank you.
And thank you. We'd like to adjourn our meeting tonight in memory of John Crossen. John was a certified financial planner, and he was appointed as one of the city's first investment review committee members. John was on the committee for ten years, and several of those, he served as chair or vice chair. He also served as chair for the Chamber of Commerce. He was an active member of the Rotary Club of Thousand Oaks for fourteen years. All that knew John, considered him a true gentleman and a wonderful friend. He will be missed by many. On behalf of the city council, I would like to express our deepest sympathies to the Crosson family. On an equally sad note, I mentioned that Councilwoman Irwin's grandmother recently, just yesterday, passed away after a very nineties, ninety-eight years, as I recall. Please hold Ms. Irwin and her family in your thoughts and prayers. There will be a more formal closing at a later date. With that, I adjourn this meeting to a special meeting, March 31st, 2009.